Order then, see if they heard that. Yeah, there they are. And looking at the agenda, I guess I'd ask first for a motion to approve the August minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the August minutes.
Second.
Any further discussion on that?
I just have one thing in general for those.
Okay.
Did we discuss once when we, on the chart where we put a motion to and we just put a checkbox where we're gonna say maybe approve and or deny? Because we might make a motion to deny and then we wouldn't just be checking the box. Just a thought.
You mean, in other words, make it clear exactly?
Make it clear on the actual chart. Either just write in the word approve or deny instead of just a check.
Okay.
Just a thought, that it's a little clearer when we're looking at what we're reviewing, just to make sure.
So in the future?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think it makes sense to change all of them.
Right. Okay, that's a good idea and we have a motion to approve the minutes and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Let's go to the tabled matters for tonight. I think we have the table number two and number three as well, at least we have that recommendation.
Yes.
So you need another motion?
Well, let's start with number two and let's have a motion to table that.
I'll move, so move.
Second.
For the reasons discussed, continuing site plan review. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number three?
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, let's see, I guess the planning board is still acting on the environmental significance.
Yep.
So we have a motion to table and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And number one on the table, and the applicant is here. My understanding is the planning board pursuant to Seeker adopted a NAG deck.
Right here.
A week or so ago.
Yep.
And they also are leaning toward approval, let's say, at September 28th. And given that, we can move forward tonight on this if we want. It has been so long, I would like for somebody to spend a few minutes sort of updating us on this application and where it stands now and how it's changed since it was originally submitted and...
I'd be happy to.
Is it March? Is it? I gave it a letter as March.
The public hearing was in May.
He had that long?
Okay.
So, in May, there were certain outstanding things that we didn't have any knowledge of. For one thing, when they came in, just to reference the setbacks that they're looking at, they're looking at a 36-foot front setback from the 50-foot requirement, looking at a 20 setback.
So 14, I'm sorry.
14-foot variance is correct.
14-foot variance from the front.
And looking at a 20-foot setback for the rear, which would require a 10-foot variance. And back in May, we tabled it pending information from different agencies as to whether or not they could actually construct something on the site, primarily the Monroe County Health Department. We did contact the Health Department. The Health Department had previously reviewed the site and the specifications for the site with the applicant's engineer, architect, and did determine that they would indeed approve a septic system on-site. One of the comments was that if they were to expand, need to expand the leach field area for whatever reason, they would then have to take the garage or the existing barn down on the site and utilize that area for expansion purposes. So then the other issue was at that point in time, you knew they were going in for site plan approval, the planning board was most probably going to be the lead agency on the matter regarding Seeker, which they ended up being. Planning board typed in a type-one action because there's a house across the street owned by the Vay family, which is on the National Registry of Historic Places. That kicked into a type-one action. The board, as you noted a minute ago, did prepare a NAG deck and has sent this on to the environmental notice bulletin, which is required to do. So the secret process is basically complete now as it relates to the application. It is a tabled matter before the board. There were two items. They submitted some technical data that the board is just cleaning up right now with the engineer. The other issue was that the matter's tabled before you and they wanted the answers as to whether or not you would grant the variance. That's it.
Okay. So, did we ever get anything, a memo or anything from planning board item?
We did, actually. Here's the table. Dig it out. Find it. Getting quite larynx. This is from, this is from the Monroe County Health Department's data, they would support.
No, that's the septic.
Yeah. You're looking for something from the board?
I could not recall earlier today when I was looking at this whether or not the planning board gave us a memo.
They did. Well, they didn't give us, they gave a resolution tabling of stating the matter that they would like the variances determined before they go on.
Oh, okay, alright.
That was the word.
Then you don't, if that's the sum and substance, you don't have to look for it.
Alright.
Okay.
Yeah, they didn't say yes, no, or no regarding the matter. They're just looking for your action on the matter one way or the other.
Okay. Alright, well, I'm lead on this application, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve. It is a limited lot, building lot, no doubt about that. But I think the balancing test weighs in favor of granting the two variances as spelled out today. No issue with the septic and I guess I would make it a condition of approval that if they expand the leach field in the future that they take down the garage. That seems to be our condition imposed by the County Department of Health. We do have a situation where I think it's self-created just by purchase of the property, knowing that it would be difficult to build on that. It is a smaller home than those in the area, but overall, I think it does generally fit within the neighborhood and not, would not be causing an adverse effect to the neighborhood. So that's my motive.
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion on this?
No, I think we've probably seen a lot of revisions too. I think the applicant tried to work within the constraints the best they could afterwards too, because the initial, from the initial to what it is now.
Tremendous.
Changed, yeah.
Well, and I guess that is a point that something is going to go here. There are times when people definitely try to put too much on a particular property. He's amended it a little bit and I guess something belongs there. Maybe, you know, maybe that's not all we should, but in any event.
I have, I have a problem with just leaving that building on there. It's already way too small, I think, to put...
In the existing barn?
Yeah. And to leave that barn on there, which wasn't in the original proposal, to me, just, I just can't see a house in that small of a thing without having a negative impact in the area, is my opinion.
So you would condition an approval upon with requiring to remove the barn? Okay, what's the condition of the barn? Do we know? You guys can answer if you like.
Old.
It's definitely old.
It was built in the mid-1920s.
Okay.
It has a metal roof, which is essentially intact. It has vertical board siding on four walls. Ninety-plus years of the weather have obviously weathered the siding, but the structure is sound. There's no tilt to it. Winds have not distorted the frame. It's an old barn.
What is the, what is it being used for? What would it be used for, the barn?
Primarily will be used just for storage. Like right now, I have chainsaws, like I collect, and I work around, I can, just for fun. And soon as we build a house, probably, we already did give basement for the sidewalks and then we gotta cut that off eight foot anyway of the barn. So that's, will go anyway, sooner or later.
Are you running a business out of the barn?
I don't. I heard a lot of that. I don't run any business of it, but I think I have a right to do something for fun there, right?
Yeah, let me, did you say that as soon as you build a home, you're gonna take the barn down?
Probably yes, because we have a condition from you or somebody that you want another seven foot of the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Which I don't have it until we cut the barn off. And the barn is one foot under the I.O.A. already, so it will be eight foot smaller.
Okay.
And maybe we'll be ordered to keep it.
Alright, so, well, having heard that, it seems reasonable then to amend the motion to include the qualifier that the barn, call it the barn, comes down when the house is complete.
Prior to the issuance of the C of O.
Yeah, fine.
I'll second that.
Prior, excuse me.
Prior to the issuance of the C of O. Go ahead, but he's already said he'd do it, but go ahead.
Oh, I know that. I just wanted to provide a minor explanation. I submitted some sketch plans to Mr. Costello, the lower level, the first floor, and the second floor. But bear in mind that the size of the lot and the perkability of the soil limits the order to no more than two-bedroom house.
Right.
Alright? And the Department of Health requires that any leach field that's designed and approved have contingency of expanding the leach field by 50% to accommodate that leach field when it starts to get old and tired.
Okay.
So the lower level of the garage that's attached to the house is intended to accommodate So whatever he would store in the barn, in the shed, rather, would go to the lower level of the garage that's attached.
Good. Good. Alright, so after I amended the motion, do we get a second?
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, did we get any, so we got this one piece of material for, that's all we have, is this one page?
That's the same thing. I think that's the one we were looking at.
Do you wanna read it now? Okay.
Five Mile Line Road?
So that's it, this is the only submission we got tonight, this one memo from planning board, no other documents submitted, usually a little pile. Everybody got that then?
This is regarding 2049, Five Mile Line Road.
The very first application, coming by government there.
So I'm embarrassed to tell you that 1992, I was actually sitting here.
I was gonna come, but I'll go back to the inside on the bottom of that.
I did. And what happened was that the applicant owned the property, Mr. Spartman owned the property in 1992, was looking to subdivide the property out. I think he took it upon himself to scale out the square footage for each of the lots and that was what was approved. He maintained setbacks. The new owner, Mr. Laduka, came in and he would like to do the same thing as Mr. Spartman never did, finalize the subdivision of the property. And he hired a surveyor to go out. When the surveyor went out, he actually did a scientific investigation as to what each lot was going to be. Hence, there was a differentiation in the lot area. They are keeping lot setbacks as were approved, but can't keep the area if they keep the setbacks. So he's asking for the area to be revised to accommodate the existing setbacks that were granted by the board in '92.
From the look of it, it looks like they didn't account for the sidewalk and beyond in towards Five Mile Line when they did the calculation.
Exactly. And, you know, of course, no house, or no lot is supposed to have more than one house in Penfield that residential property.
Was that an outbuilding at one point?
No, it was built as a house.
So how, just prior to zoning?
Prior to zoning, prior to 1962.
So now it's actually more compliant?
Pretty much, do what you want it. And so now you're gonna prove to see non-conforming condition that they're trying to bring back into compliance.
You had to drag past it.
Okay, so I think we've discussed one. How about number two? Any questions for clarification on number two?
Did I see the map? When it was built, it was built a smaller lot than all the others in the neighborhood. There was a curve in the road that brought it up and made it smaller. The house has got a 10-foot setback or a portion of the house. He'd like to add a garage addition on that would then meet that setback as it is now and keep it within the same range as the existing setback.
I think this house is a perfect example of what you see on a map and what you see on land.
Live.
Live is totally different. The house next door, which is, I think, in compliance, is closer to the road, it looks like, from his house to this house, so I'm crazy.
Alright, how about number three? Any questions for clarification on that one?
Did you all see the photograph that was sent in by Ms. Irving?
Sample example.
Yeah, it was a sample example.
Yeah.
It's pretty close to that. They won't have the brick and everything on the base, but they had to go to the Historic Preservation Board the other night and they received approval from the board, pending your approval. Number four is the same thing, actually. It's not gonna be two applications like that at the same time.
Yep.
Number five, Pete's probably so familiar with this, he probably thinks about it in his sleep. Verizon put a cell tower up on Charlie's Restaurant property on Empire Boulevard. They needed a support shelter, which they put up. They now need a second support shelter added to the first one.
Now, what, by the way, what ca, I sure will hear, but what causes that? What can, generally speaking, just increase use, more antennas, et cetera?
Yeah, I mean, it's just the technology changes, it's more data, all sorts of things going on there. The property busts up to the Monroe County Parkland, which is all residential, so they need a buffer variance. They also need a 30-foot setback variance, you know, they need a variance from 30-foot setback requirement. I think the planning board did ask them why they could not relocate it to comply with code and I think it had to do with configuration of the tower as it relates to the existing building and how this existing building would relate to the second building. And there's an enclosure there that they use as lease space, so there was some, I'll let them explain it in more detail, but there was some rationalization for doing what they wanted to do.
Put all the land behind this county land that will never be built on.
Six is Baytown Plaza, two wall-mounted signs. It's an unusual application.
I have one question on that. If you look at the building, the side that faces Empire Boulevard, but the side that faces Brant?
Mm-hmm.
You got three, I assume there's gonna be three tenants on the side?
There are, yes.
Okay. And you got, the building itself has an area where it would look like you're gonna put signs. It's rectangular above it.
Yeah.
And this one is about another third as large as the other two. I'm just wondering why? Was it, did they think about putting a certain...
The square footage is not that much different among the three tenants. The middle one's a little bit larger than the other two, but it's not like one's 100 feet and the other one's 300 feet and the other one's 300. They're all kind of close to each other.
I couldn't figure out architecturally why you would have that bigger than the other two. I mean, it's closer to the corner, but...
Yeah, we should ask them to identify the lease area of frontages because that's what's really driving the signs.
Right, and that's, you know, that's another...
They just happen to be lucky enough, they're lucky enough to be on the corner, which faces both Brant Point and Empire Boulevard. The other two will not have that luxury.
So this actually violates the total square footage as well as, yes, two signs.
Right. Usually they don't.
No?
Usually they don't. Usually they try to keep them under, so it's...
Trying to make that argument, yeah.
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, and number seven is request for three signs.
Can I ask about this? I was kind of comparing what was going on with that, kind of nearby signs. Is there a rhyme or a reason?
I don't know, and I think, I didn't check, but I'll have to, but did you happen to notice whether or not their names on the, on the prestanding sign panels?
I didn't notice and as a matter of fact, I meant to and I...
I meant to do it too and I didn't, so they're...
Oh, we can ask?
Yeah.
On directory signs?
Yeah.
The thing I would ask about is, you got Don's there, ESL.
Right.
Velveline, Monroe Muffler, all of whom are brought in the same line, none of which have signs on the side.
Well, it's because there's trees coming down the side of the road, too, blocking the visual.
But then you get like AAA.
So they wouldn't send a report?
Why not?
And subway across the street. So it's very...
There's no rhyme or reason.
I just wanted to...
Back to the Walmart one or that plaza.
Right.
We had talked to DeMarco many times, saying, how about some kind of sign, plan for them about that? And yet, everyone's gonna keep coming to us for multiple signs.
Do you mind just, at some point, just saying, hey, we have a...
Because I don't wanna start saying, oh, everybody just...
And now we have another application.
And here's a long till that spills out into the general population.
Right. Or else then maybe then before they even come before us, we wait to hear it and then maybe that will...
Mm-hmm. That's a good point.
Alright, we have so far six for next time. And the deadline is a deadline Friday?
Yeah, they're all residential.
Yeah.
Now, the deadline has passed.
It has passed.
I've actually, I've actually prepared the agenda. There's a problem though, one of the properties is asking for a setback on the concrete patio. When they're reviewing the plan, I noted that they got a shed that's 0.5 feet from their property line, which has probably been there 100 years, but...
Had that in there at the same time.
So I've asked them to do that, so...
Okay, anything else? Alright, we've still got 10 minutes, but let's take a 10-minute break and then we'll reconvene for the public hearings. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Penfield Zoning Board of Appeals. Tonight's meeting will take place in two parts. The first part will be the public hearings. We will ask the applicant to come up to that podium there, give us a name and address, and then explain to the board why the relief requested should be granted. Once the applicant is done with the presentation, board members will likely have some questions. And then after that, we'll invite anyone in the audience that cares to come up and pretty much do the same thing, come up to that podium, give us name and address, and speak about the application to come up and do so. After the public hearings are adjourned, we'll take a brief recess and we'll reconvene in the back of the room to deliberate on the applications and take care of any other business that the board may have. Members of the public are welcome at both sessions, the public hearings and the deliberations, although deliberations generally are times reserved for conversation amongst board members, board members with staff, and with counsel. As I said, you're welcome to stay for both parts of the meeting. Tonight's agenda, I would say, is medium. If you choose to leave before we finish tonight, you can certainly call tomorrow and find out what action, if any, the board took on a particular item. Every month, we like to point out that we believe the town does a good job of notifying neighbors that live in the vicinity of properties which are the subject of applications, that the applications are going to be heard. And the town does it by sending out postcards to neighbors, by requiring the applicant to put signs in front of the property, which we've all seen, by posting the agenda on the website, and posting it here on the bulletin board. And the town does that so people are more fully informed of their rights to come in and speak about the applications and we think it's a pretty good process and we appreciate it when folks come in. With that having been said, I'd ask everyone to rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. May we have the first application, please?
Item number one, Thomas Laduka, on behalf of TJL Realty LLC, 231 Shore Drive, Rochester, New York, 14622. Request area variances to allow the modification of a zoning board appeals resolution dated May 26, 1992, from chapter 250-5.1 F1 and chapter 250-7.15B of the code, to allow subdivision of a pre-existing nonconforming lot with less lot area than permitted at 2049, Five Mile Line Road. The property is owned by TJL Realty LLC and is owned R115, SPL number 139.063-1-4. Application number 17Z-0056.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Could you do that again, please?
Was it a little long?
No, it's great, it's just a little long, Jim.
That's a short one.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Laduka and I represent TJL Realty. And Kelly Barbereri is also with me, she's the vice president of TJL Realty, okay? So, as you heard, in 1992, when the property was purchased there or about, to my recollection, I was told that there was a variance that was obtained for the property. And at that time, I had no intentions of doing anything, but I figured maybe in turn someday I would utilize the variance, as I found out the variance basically goes with the property for the life of the property. So that said, about a year ago, TJL Realty decided to sell one of the pieces, the parcel in the back, the smaller parcel. And in doing so, we decided to have a surveyor come out and do a survey on the property to more or less present to you this evening. We found out that in doing the survey, it met, meant, met two of the requirements, but it didn't meet a third requirement, which happened to be the fence right here, right here dividing the two properties. That fence apparently needs to be pushed back six feet. I would like it to stay just because it kind of, 2049, the fence would, if it was pushed back six feet, it would leave not too much room for 2049. I could be wrong there. That is entirely up to the board to make that decision and that is the reason for our application this evening.
Okay. From the notes, I was saying, it looked like everything was primarily the same for the site from what it was, I think, back in 1992, I think was, when this was, before us before. Has the fence moved that you know of?
No.
Okay, so the fence hasn't moved, so the properties have basically stayed the same?
Yes.
There's two sites on one parcel? And the only thing that really has changed is the survey has become more accurate to demonstrate that this is a square footage of Lot 1 and this is where the square footage of Lot 2 was?
That is correct.
Okay. And then, part of the reason you want to subdivide and get the variances is so that it's easier to sell?
Yes.
Okay. And the rear setbacks and the lot with setbacks, those are gonna be identical then still?
Yes.
And everything will stay exactly the same?
Exactly.
That's all the clarification I need, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the board?
I'm just wanna make sure I understand. The fence portion, you're talking about leaving it the way, where it is and changing that lot line?
No.
As it appears on the survey map, or no?
Actually, yes and no. If you leave the fence where it is, it does change the lot line, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Costello?
It does, yes.
Okay.
So that being the case, if you're utilizing the fence as your new property line, you're gonna have to give the board the proper square footage of what it's going to be for each lot, which will be different than what you're asking for with the application.
Okay. Well, I've gone, I went over this with, in zoning, and the consensus was to leave it the same.
The fence?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, to, not to create any...
Change the lot line?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because it looks, just looking at it on a map, it's pretty symmetrical as far as the distance between the lot line and each, and each structure on two lots, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's six half dozen, so...
But it is the way it's demonstrated on the survey map.
Right, it is demonstrated, right here. This is the line we're talking about.
So are you contemplating an approval based upon that map?
Based on the map and the way he's presenting, because that map is the calculations for the square footage.
Exactly. And may I ask you, obviously, we're gonna have two new tax, we're gonna have modifications on the tax. So the taxes will be determined based on square...
Assessor.
On the assessor, but also based on the size of each property, correct?
I would imagine.
Typically, that's a consideration.
And the value of the property.
The proportion and the value, of course. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so just to clarify, that, that map that you submitted with your application and we've, that's sufficiently identified, isn't it, Jim?
It is.
Okay, so that map, the representations regarding the square footage of each lot on that map is what you're asking us to use as a basis for granting the various request?
That is correct.
Okay. Anybody in the audience care to speak about this? Thank you.
Item number two, Robert Fitter, 58 Valley View Drive, Penfield, New York, 14526. Request an area variance from chapter 250-5.1 F1 of the code, to allow a garage addition with less rear setback than permitted at 58 Valley View Drive. Property is owned by Robert Fitter and is owned R115, SPL number 139.11-2-67. Application number 17Z-0054.
Good evening. My name's Rob, Robert Fitter. I'm 58 Valley View Drive, Penfield, New York. And I applied for a variance on the property so that I could extend the, my one-bay garage to a two-bay garage, which would allow me to put my cars into a garage that, and keep them out of the winter and the summer heat, like that. So that's basically what I was attempting to do. The... what I was attempting to do. The, early in the summer, I applied for a permit, and the permit was denied based upon the fact that the rear setback of the new construction would be in violation, the 30-foot setback line. As it turns out, the house was built in '55, and the code was put in place in '62, so that the 30-foot setback not only violates the new construction they want, but also the existing house. So, this particular situation was a, kind of a pre-existing condition that the house as well, but the new construction as well. So, I'm applying for a variance so that I'd be able to extend the garage and allow me to put my cars in there, which would, the dimensions of this new construction in the rear area would be at the same line as the existing house is now, the house and the deck. So, there's no additional violation, no further building that would increase the setback or the setback of the house. So, it's all one, one nice line, and it would fall in line with existing construction of the house.
Okay, board questions?
Thanks for coming tonight. I just wanted to just ask, what is, what do you anticipate the garage addition to look like? Will it be the same in character as the rest of the house?
The garage itself, the existing garage, has a, from a distance, it has a roof line that goes from east to west. I'm going to continue that roof line across, so the appearance is going to be exactly the way it is now, except just extended. So, the roof lines and everything else would stay the same.
So, the exterior, the walls, for example, will be the same as the siding on the house?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we're going to, there, it would be, right, exactly.
And then...
Minus some fancy work that then was done on the framing.
Do you have any, have you contacted your neighbors?
I have contacted my neighbors, talked to my neighbors, and they had no problem.
Okay. I think that was all the question. Oh, did you have, did you anticipate any change in, something with, any problems with drainage or anything like that?
Well, there would be additional draining off of the new construction. So, what I was going to do was to divert that off into the lawn area.
Okay.
So, that'd actually be great, because that's where I need the water anyways. But that's, my intent is to take it off the side like that and spread it out on the west side.
So, it's going off the side and not the back?
Not the back. No, there's already, it's a wet area already, so...
Yeah, all right. Those were the questions I had.
I had a question.
Sure.
Could you describe, for the record, the buffering in the back and along the side? Are there trees that block the view of this from your neighbors?
On the west side, which is the side between me and Baird Road, I have spirea, which is about six feet tall, about 70 feet wide, and it's on the burr part of, so that my house is higher than my neighbors on the Baird Road side. So, his vision is basically, was, his current vision of the house is very minimal, so this new construction would be minimal as well. On the backside, there are, geez, it must be 50 feet tall, apothecy, and that's all the way from one end, from the east to the west, and the back border, that would be all of this apothecy all the way across. So, there's, there's no, from that neighbor's view, there'll be no change.
Thank you.
How many houses in the neighborhood approximately have two-car garages? Ballpark, half of them?
Ballpark, I would say half. I took a slight survey.
Right.
Included in the packet, my next-door neighbor, the neighbor with, closest to Baird Road on the other side of Valley View, neighbor on the east side, all have two-car garages.
Okay. Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number three, Gwen Irving, 3007 Atlantic Avenue, Penfield, New York, 14526, request an area variance from chapter 250-5.1 F1 of the code, to allow an entrance overhang with less front setback than permitted at 1986 Five Mile Line Road. Property is owned by Gwen Irving and is zoned R115, SPL number 124.18-1-44, application number 17Z-0052.
Hello, my name is Gwen Irving. I live at 3007 Atlantic Avenue in Penfield. I recently bought the house on Five Mile Line Road, and I'm in the process of renovating it. So, after we excavated the front yard, took down all the old trees and the shrubs, we found a front stoop, and the front stoop to nowhere, just hanging off the front of the house. So, what I'm applying for is a variance to put an overhang over the front stoop. The overhang would have black shingles on it and tie into the roof, and the front two corners would have four-by-four posts. It would just be an open overhang, not enclosed. So, that would give some protection from the elements and make the front of the house look a lot nicer. So, it'll be aesthetically more pleasing. That's it.
Let's see, and to clarify, it looks like currently the house is setback at 52 feet?
That's right.
And by adding five feet to the front, you'd be moving up to 47 feet from the, you know, the setback would be then 47 feet?
Yes.
So, that would require a three-foot variance for the front. And the purpose of this is primarily for the roof to keep off snow, rain, ice?
That's right.
Okay.
And to make it more aesthetically appealing.
Okay, instead of a flat front that goes across the front.
It is just a very bland, flat front of the house.
Other houses down the street, is this a common, they have...
Some have overhangs and some don't.
Okay, yep, so it's, so it's not out of character, then?
No, it isn't.
And I assume you probably have a storm door, door swings out, so you need the extra space for when you're stepping up, so you can actually open the door and step in, and that's why you need five foot and not just a two foot?
Exactly.
Okay.
There is a new storm door on there, swings out.
And then, the representation that you submitted in your packet, you have a design of it?
That is...
That's pretty close to what it'll...
Exactly, but without the stone on the bottom of the pillars.
Sure, okay. That's all I have.
Anything else from the board? Anyone in the audience? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number four, Michael Schalacy, 1440 Salt Road, Webster, New York, 14580, request an area variance from chapter 250-5.1 F1 of the code, to allow a front porch with less front setback than permitted at 1676 Plank Road. Property is owned by the Schalacy Family Real Estate, by the family real estate, and zoned RA2, SPL number 096.03-1-14, application number 17Z-0057.
Good evening, I'm Michael Schalacy, 1440 Salt Road. I'm talking for my parents. My mother and father would like to put a front porch on the front of their house, and we're looking for eight or nine inches, just so we can square off the slab, and we're going to turn the stairs sideways, so that they can put an overhang over the front door to keep the snow and ice off and so they can sit out there.
And you're adding nine inches to what's there now, correct?
To what's there now, yes.
Which is already into the right-of-way?
Yes.
Yeah, so the house itself is 50 feet back.
The house is 50 feet back.
So, if you could jump three feet from the ground in, you wouldn't need the stairs, but...
Back when they built it, they showed him four posts, and he says, "You want the lot?" And he says, "Yeah." This is where the house is going, he says, "Okay."
They weren't thinking about that back then.
No, that's the way they did it, so...
So, so what's the amount of the variance? Nine inches in addition, but that creates a six-foot?
Yes, it creates a six-foot.
So, you need a 46-foot?
Right. They're looking so we can get in and out of the house if we have to carry furniture or something. It'll just make the swing a little better to get out.
So, is it going to be similar to what the last applicant described, with two posts and a roof?
Yeah.
Gable roof?
Yes. A gable roof to match the house, white columns, you know, with the railings around it, and the roof tied in.
And with the shingle, to the extent the shingles would match the house?
Correct.
Roof the same?
Correct. We'll probably end up doing the whole front of the house over, just to tie it in right, so it doesn't leak, but...
And is it, the steps going to be at one, to one side rather than front?
Correct.
Towards the...
Towards the driveway.
That would make sense.
Towards the driveway, and then they're going to curve the sidewalk around.
But the peak itself is going to face...
It's going to be opposite the house, yes.
Okay. And no change, you're going to change this, the sidewalk to that?
Just from the stairway. It's not going, it's going to go closer to the house, if anything. It's not going to go out.
Right, but you have to rework that, I assume?
Right, it's going to be reworked around the curve, coming down the stairs, then out to, out to the existing sidewalk.
And then, what are you going to do where the existing stairs are?
They're getting covered up. That's in the, that's in the six-foot. They're all going to be...
Going to like box it?
They're going to be inside. This thing's going to be concrete.
Oh, okay.
It's all going to be cement.
Gotcha. Okay. That's all I have.
I think I talked to your father that was out there, and he was talking about, he wanted it the way it is, so he could put a couple chairs out there some night and just sit when it's a nice night.
My mother says she's old, and she wants to sit on the porch.
And the nights like this, I can understand, so. I just wanted to make that comment, is that's why you're including the steps in the front and making it larger?
Right.
So, you could possibly have a chair to...
Right, so you could set something out there.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else from the board?
Did I hear you say you're going to put railings on it, too?
Yes.
For safety. Okay, thanks.
Anyone in the audience? Thank you.
Item number five, Robert J. Brunner, 1300 Clinton Square, Rochester, New York, 14604, on behalf of the Bell Atlantic Mobile Systems of Allentown, Inc., doing business as Verizon Wireless, request area variances from chapter 250-5.7D3 and chapter 250-7.2B of the code, to allow the installation of a wireless telecommunications shelter with less rear setback and less buffer from the residential zoning district than permitted at 1843 Empire Boulevard. Property is owned by Jeffrey C. Riedel and his own general business, SPL number 093.15-1-63, application number 17Z-0051.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you to the board, town staff, for the opportunity to be here this evening. My name is Nate Vanderwall of Nixon Peabody, 1300 Clinton Square, appearing this evening on behalf of Verizon Wireless, in connection with this, at least by comparison, rather minimal application of materials that were submitted in connection with this project. Also here this evening is Robert Wilson, the site acquisition consultant in connection with this project engaged by Verizon Wireless. As is, as is detailed in the packet of materials that was submitted, Verizon Wireless is looking to make some modifications, some extension of its existing wireless telecommunications facility at 1843 Empire Boulevard. This is to adapt the facility or modify the facility to accommodate what's called the CRAN hub, centralized radio access network. As this board is fully aware, with our office appearing on behalf of you many times recently in connection with the need for additional facilities, the wireless network is facing demands like it never has before, both with voice, but most especially with the data demand on the networks. To accommodate this network, for Verizon Wireless to be able to build up its network to meet the FCC required level of coverage and support, it needs to thus adapt its network and the infrastructure in place to address this demand. A common upgrade in this network or in the, in this telecommunications world is the upgrade to these CRAN hubs. What this is, is a centralized data processing center that is linked with neighboring sites and allows all the processing to be done at the centralized location as opposed to at each individual location. The benefits of this, at a high level, because I'm not qualified to speak in depth as to how the RF specifics work, but what it does is it allows an increase in more efficient data throughput on the network. It also provides for interference cancellation within the various, within the network, within the grid. As we've talked about many times, just briefly, at each cell edge, which is where one cell runs up against the next cell, where those cells overlap is interference, which minim, which reduces the signal quality, which can lead to drop calls, which could lead to unsuccessful inability to connect to the network. What this, what this does, what these individual nodes within the fiber backhaul do is allows for more, it reduces that cell interference, thus creating a more homogeneous network, a stronger network that's to be able to, it's able to supply higher capacity within the existing, within the existing sites on the network. So, that, at a very high level, is why they're looking to do this upgrade. There are numerous CRAN hubs updates within the network and the surrounding municipalities, and this happens to be an area where that's needed. These CRAN hub sites are needed on the network where there is a real heavy demand on the network, such as in the town of Penfield and the surrounding area. When Verizon Wireless identifies the need for this CRAN hub installation, they then looked, okay, where can this, the equipment shelter that houses the necessary equipment be accommodated? They're looking for existing sites to minimize, you know, additional projects, additional build-outs, additional sites that can accommodate this approximately 12-by-13 shelter. They're looking for locations where there's an existing infrastructure of fiber in place. They're also looking for a location that's more or less centralized to these sites, both existing and proposed, that will feed back to this hub. In this case, in looking at all those factors, they located the existing facility at 1843 Empire Boulevard that checked off all three of those conditions. There was space within the compound with, in this case with, after various design, looking at different designs with a very minimal build-out of the existing compound. There was an existing fiber backhaul in place, and it was central to the both existing and proposed future sites, both in the town and the surrounding municipalities, that could draw back, connect, link back to this centralized hub. After identifying the site, they then, again, looked at various designs, and ultimately what is proposed in the site plans, drawing this board's attention to the most recent revised plans that were provided under a letter dated August 7th, incorporate some comments from the PRC, some received at the planning board's July 13 meeting, thus leading to these updated plans which have been provided. But as is identified on those plans, the 12-by-13 shelter will be housed importantly within the existing leased parcel, the 50-by-100 leased parcel, but to fit it in within that area, to leave all the, you know, necessary distances within that, there is a minimal eight-foot fence extension depth towards the rear property line, and about a 10-and-a-half-foot fenced extension width-wise, to accommodate both the equipment shelter as well as the new generator and propane tank. As is detailed in the, I believe, July 14th application materials, this Verizon Wireless, this project complies with the standards for granting the area variances, and we can go into that how much this board would like to, but I just want to highlight, again, the minimal nature of this, of this request, an eight-foot extension depth-wise and the 10-foot extension-wise, creating very minimal, if any, visual impact, given the buffer existing at the rear of the property, as well as its depth off Empire Boulevard, and the fact that there's an existing site there now with similar, nearly identical equipment in place. Again, we were before the planning board on July 13th, seeking site plan appro- we were before the planning board on July 13th, seeking site plan approval and revisions or modifications to the existing special or conditional use permit. They also declared themselves lead agency for purposes seeker, and I believe prepared a letter of recommendation to this board to approve the, the project as is proposed. We are looking tonight for this board to consent to the planning board's role as lead agency for seeker and to approve the necessary area variances in connection with the project.
Great. Have you had any issues since the, the tower went up initially with accessing it? Does anybody know?
I am not aware.
Robert Wilson, I'm a real estate contractor for Verizon, address is 6615 Topath Road, East Syracuse, New York.
Okay.
I'm not aware of any issues accessing the site.
And is there any reason to believe that this additional structure will create any problems that?
No.
Okay.
No.
No safety issues with the proposed use of it?
No, it's, it's unmanned facility. It's, it's meant to operate on its own. There will be a tech that goes there once every month or two just to check on things.
Okay.
Unless there's a problem, then they're going to be there fixing it, but no, it's, it's meant to operate on its own independently.
And you need the hundred buffer variance because there happens actually to be a park behind it, but because the parkland for some reason is zoned residential?
Correct.
It's as if there were houses there. That's the reason for the buffer, so that, you need it, but there really aren't any houses back there that are affected by it.
And we did look at several different designs. The key thing was we're trying to fit it inside the existing fifty-by-one-hundred-foot lease area.
Lease area.
For the original build, when that, that site was originally built.
Right.
So basically, they didn't fence in the entire lease area. They just fenced in, you know, a smaller portion, and then now here, we're, you know, we have to bump it out a little bit, but we are staying inside that original fifty-by-one-hundred-foot lease area.
Okay, and that's good foresight, I suppose, that you leased excess amount of land. And even with having to bump it out again, no, you don't foresee any issues with operation there now that more of your lease area is covered?
No.
Okay, any other board questions?
Yeah, I just got one.
Sure.
The height of the new structure?
Yep.
Similar to what's there now?
Very, very similar. It's just a standard equipment building. I think it's ten feet-ish. Let me just double-check that. Ten feet, on the highest part, it's ten feet, seven and a quarter inches, because it is sloped a little bit, so there is a high side and a low side, but roughly about ten and a half feet high, which is very similar to what's there. Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
And it is a twelve-by-thirty shelter, not a twelve-by-thirteen.
Right, right.
I noticed it was, you said a new generator and fuel tank. Is there currently a power generation on site?
Correct, yeah. So the existing site that's there is what they call a macro site, is a typical macro site. They've got equipment on the ground. They've got antennas up on the tower. The generator for that existing shelter is inside the shelter, and then there's an existing propane tank there for that. We, we weren't going to be able to put the generator inside the shelter for the new one. They need all that space because this is going to house equipment for all the neighbors, neighboring sites in the area, so they need the space. So that's why they're proposing the external generator for this.
Okay.
And that's, is the existing one stay there or the new generator is just to power the new?
Correct. They're independent of each other. They're going to keep the macro equipment there operating.
So this is a sense it's own entity that sits on the same footprint that you just happen to have on site?
Correct, yeah. This is just the hub for the neighboring.
Right, you just made good use of this property.
Correct.
Okay. Good.
How often is, excuse me, how often is the generator going to be?
Uh, there's a power outage, it's obviously going to be running, but it does cycle typically once a week for thirty to sixty minutes, around there, and they can set the scheduling, you know, usually it's during normal business hours. They're not going to run it in the middle of the night, and they do that because if there is an issue, they can send a tech out to address it.
Yeah.
You know, and that's when they're working. Most of them are on during the day, so.
Does that answer your question, Mike?
Yes.
So Kaz was having the same thought as you.
We always do the same thing. Great minds.
Any, anyone in the audience care to speak about this? Thank you, gentlemen.
Wait, just one last question, just for the record. For the variance for the hundred-foot buffer, the number of feet you're going to be encroaching into, I know you said eight?
Is an additional eight feet of the.
You're asking for a ninety-two-foot variance from that, and then you're asking for a twenty-two-foot variance for the rear setback.
I, I believe the rear setback is thirty feet, and the equipment as proposed is now nineteen and a half feet from the, so it'd be eleven and a half feet, correct.
All right, thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next application?
Item number six, Laura Baranis, 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, New York, 14621, on behalf of the Shoe Department/Encore, requests a special permit under Chapter 250-10.13C of the code to allow two building-mounted signs at 1900 Empire Boulevard. The property is owned by the DeMarco Baytown Associates and his own general business, SPL number 093.02-1-23.111, application number 17Z-0055.
Hi, Laura Baranis, Premier Sign Systems, 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, New York, 14621, representing the design team for Shoe Department/Encore over in Baytown Plaza. They're asking for two sets of letters over there, and they would be exactly the same size as per the
Okay, why do you need two signs?
Well, they won't.
Why the size of the signs?
Well, the size kind of fits the fascia area, really. I mean, it's, it's pretty in scale with it, as far as, the front's pretty big out there. So it's, it's about a standard-sized letter. It's a thirty-six inch for that area, that type of fascia, for that size of fascia, I should say, really.
Well, I don't know if this is the scale, but judging from what you gave us, I mean, you can see the Burlington sign, which is a bigger operation, is, and only one line is, has smaller, smaller letters than what you're proposing on the side.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a different in the font, though. Burlington uses a lowercase on their letters, and Shoe Department uses the uppercase on everything.
All right, so what's the purpose of the second sign?
They're requesting a second sign. One is facing Walmart, and the other one is facing on the front of the plaza, so they're, that's why they're asking for two.
And again, I, I guess the argument is they, they have no visibility at the new Walmart unless they put it on the side, and they have no visibility from Empire unless they have a sign in the front, which is where their entrance is. But I guess my question is, can they live with a smaller sign? Because you're actually violating the amount of linear square feet that you're allowed based on the frontage of your, of your building.
I think this is, I mean, I'm not making the sign. I'm only representing design team, but I think this is what they agreed upon with the landlord as far as sizes for the sign. That's what they came up with. I think he's here. Yeah, he's here tonight.
Well, I want you to come on up, because Mike's, that, the fact that you guys have agreed to it doesn't really answer Mike's question.
Right. If we're going to get, I guess, let me put it to you more bluntly. Are you asking us to, to give you this sign or nothing? These two size signs, or, or not?
Denied.
I don't think so.
Or stated another way, are you willing to shrink the size of the two signs that you have proposed so, so that you can get it either at or under or close to the total square footage allowed?
Okay.
Which is two-hundred-and-seventy square feet. You're at about three-forty.
Okay.
So you're significantly, everything's relative, but I would use the word, significantly over the total amount of square footage that you're allowed.
Okay.
And honestly, this is, this is not, these questions are not unusual for these kind of applications.
Yeah.
We try to minimize the amount of overage, and you are asking for two signs, and the statute allows you one, so you're, you'd be getting something, I suppose, but.
I think that would be probably something agreeable with them to downsize it if you need them to be less square footage than what they are right now.
I, I guess what we propose is if, would be to table this, to give you an opportunity to talk with them and see what they can live with as far as reduction, and then we can come back next month and talk about it.
If, if I may, as well, Alan Rainbow from the DeMarco Group, Alden Real Estate. We manage and operate the shopping center. When this Shoe Department came to us originally with a signed package proposal, they did have on one elevation forty-eight-inch letters, and on the secondary elevation, it was thirty-six inches in height, and we said that we weren't comfortable with that as a property owner and landlord, and asked them to shrink the size down to the thirty-six-inch letters being used uniformly on both elevations. And we do feel it was our, based upon our internal calculations, that by bringing it down to the thirty-six-inch letters, that we did fall within the square foot and linear foot calculations, and that we're, we're still a few feet underneath what's allowable, based upon what we came up with internally. So that was the.
Makes a difference.
Yeah. That was the authorization that we gave to the prospective tenant, and yes, this, they view this as being critical to the, to the operation of their business, and they have not signed the lease with us as yet, and the lease is contingent upon this approval for their business to go into this location.
I guess my answer to that would be still to table it and have the staff recalculate.
Yeah, I mean, let's, let's, let's say you guys were wrong or were wrong.
Correct.
So let's just, for instance, if you're wrong, would your plan be to go back to your prospective tenant and say, geez, we went to the zoning board, they're concerned about the overage, guess what, we did a recalculation, and you are over. So I, I would imagine that's what your plan would be, and, and we can check too.
We, we utilize the signed site plan for building up, which is the old Walmart, and that identifies the leased area that you showed us as part of that approval process. And using that calculation, this came out to be two-hundred-and-seventy square feet. Unless you're bumping out and adding more lease area for Shoe Department versus what you're showing us on the approved plan, that's what you're entitled to.
Yeah, I believe there's, there's, there must be some inconsistencies then with what we're looking at, and what perhaps you're.
We're just using the approved plan.
I'm looking at the scope of what you have here, building to sign, and for a second sign, which, okay, you need to identify it to people that are shopping at Walmart, but I don't think you need a sign that's half the height of the building to do that, so.
Right, and that argument would be valid even if they were within the numbers.
I think they don't need a sign.
So I, I guess I'd suggest, I know you're lead, Mike, but I'd suggest we table this so you guys can have a further discussion on what, what the numbers are, and then also if it turns out the staff has calculated it correctly, then I'd suggest you have a conversation with the prospective tenant, and we're business friendly. We've, we've been business friendly to a lot of tenants in that plaza, and.
Yes.
I don't think we intend to change that, but we do have to comply with rules and.
So you're saying right now that they're only allowed how many square feet?
Two-hundred-and-seventy.
Is that per sign?
No, total.
Total.
There's no per sign, they're only allowed one.
It's two, it's two square feet for each linear foot of the frontage of the building, at the least.
All right.
Okay, so we're going to table it to allow you the opportunity to, further conversation. And while you're here, I don't, were you here when we were having our public session there earlier?
I caught the very tail end of it.
All right. The plaza's going great. We want to continue to help, as we said, within the rules, of course, but we've asked some of your coworkers before about coming in with a signed package plan for the entire plaza, including directory signs maybe, because there's one, two, three entrances now to the plaza at least, and maybe some directory signs would help alleviate some of these pressures about having two building signs. You have a whole strip of stores now that only have one side facing, I'll call it the, well, I'm not going to say old, but the former Walmart parking lot. We addressed some of that with the banners and such, but some of those signs we think may be helpful, and we're willing to talk about that.
And I know internally, we are working on comprehensive sign packages, not only for the pylon signs, but wayfinding signs.
Exactly.
Throughout the internal portions, the drive areas of the, of the shopping center.
It's looking good. Plaza's looking good.
So we're, we, we're actually waiting on one proposal to come into us right now so we can kind of look at, weigh different concepts from different vendors against each other, and then we'll be making some decisions and coming back to make a presentation on that.
Yeah, I just see, Mike, it would create more certainty for prospective tenants if you had a package in place.
Absolutely.
And it would make it easier for us and for you, so.
It's something we're working on right now.
All right, very good. Well, as I said, I'm sure you're welcome to stay, but I'm sure this is going to be tabled.
Understood.
Some people find it nice to see us in action afterwards, though. Okay, who knows? Got to be somebody.
All right, item number seven, Craig Tesler, 10 Excel Drive, Rochester, New York, 14621, on behalf of Russell Cellular, Verizon, requests a special permit under Article 250-10-13C of the code to allow three building-mounted signs at 2071 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. The property is owned by the Conifer Penfield Associates and his own general business, SPL number 140-05-1-1.2/22160, application number 17Z-0053.
Filling in for Craig.
Lucky you.
Yeah, exactly. There, there is a sign there already, and that's sign one, dash one. That should be the first drawing in your packet, and it looks like they're asking for two more signs, which would be S2-1 and S3-1. It's very common for Verizon to put three to four signs all the way around the buildings when they put their buildings up, so.
Or request them.
Pardon?
It says, or request multiple signs like we've had before.
Yes, yes.
So first, let me just ask about the sign. Are they, are you intending that these would be lit, backlit?
Yes. I believe these are, yeah, they're facelit.
They're facelit, okay. And are you, is Verizon also, is that on the monument sign that's out in front on 250?
I'm not sure if, I don't have a drawing in here showing it's on the monument sign.
Okay.
But if there is a monument sign and it's a tenant sign, I'm sure they're probably on there, but I can't tell you one-hundred percent for sure.
Yeah, I wondered, and I didn't get a chance to check it, so. Tell me again about, you know, why three signs versus the one? I'm just thinking about a lot of properties in that area that have just the one sign out in front.
Yeah, it's kind of a standard practice with them. I mean, they, they usually go for four signs if they can all the way around the building. It's just, you know, it's just.
I mean, I understand. Everybody wants signage and, yeah.
I've never really seen them put one sign up and just call it a day. They usually will go for, you know, they're trying to catch the other sides of the roads and stuff here and the entrances. It looks to me, as I'm looking at the map here, there's an entrance right here off of Fairport Nine Mile Road.
Right.
And then there's a lot of vendors and tenants in, in behind there in the plaza too, so I'm sure they're trying to catch them. There's pizza going in the pizza place and the other, in the yogurt place and everything, pulling out. They want to catch them from that way and.
Right.
Tenants from there.
So I'm just trying to figure out what the argument would be, given that, like, for example, Dunkin' Donuts only has one sign right in the front. The same with, I think ESL just has one sign too, if I'm not mistaken. Summit, sorry. Maybe it's all in the brain. So do you think they'd be amenable to just one sign or two signs?
Well, I think a lot of the other stores like this don't usually go for more than one sign. Like, a lot of them have the big sign on the front, and that's all that they go for. The smaller mom and pops, they really don't want to spend the money on extra signs, and they, they try to put up the nicest sign they can on the front of the building and call it a day, so.
So I just think we need to be mindful of being consistent.
Yeah.
So that's where, that's where my questions come from.
I think it's a common practice of Verizon. Like I say, I've, I've installed signs for them for years. Craig has been working with the account for quite a while now, and I, I know that they usually try to get one sign on each side and one on the front. Just, you know.
Okay, that was, those were the questions I had. Those were the questions I had.
I guess our zoning ordinance sets the standards for business signs, building-mounted ones. And that standard is one per building.
Yes.
Per business. So the question is, if Verizon's asking for an exception to that standard, they got to come up with, you know, reasonable reasons why they need it. So far, I haven't heard what those reasons are, so.
To follow up on your comment, Verizon, which is directly across the street in the plaza, has one sign mounted on the front of the building.
Right.
And then has the two directory signs providing service for both streets. But they've only had one sign for the time they've been there.
Yes, as every other tenant of that building.
Right.
And this location has two entrances?
From what I'm looking on the map here, it's, I can see an entrance coming off of Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. I'm not sure if there's another entrance coming up off the other road up here or the other road here. I don't see it on the map.
Okay.
There are two points of access on Fairport Nine Mile Point Road. There's actually a point of access on Penfield.
I mean, more for the building, the building entrances to get into there.
Oh, one, oh, the building itself?
Yeah.
One.
One?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a former bank.
Right. So the other side that looks like an entrance really isn't an entrance?
Right.
But I'm just looking at where that entrance from Five Mile Line Road is.
Nine Mile.
Nine Mile, excuse me. Nine Mile Point. You're right next to that entrance, pretty much.
Yes, they are.
Very obvious that the Verizon is there.
They are, yes.
Okay.
Right. Anything else from the board? Anything from the audience? All right. Thank you very much.
Okay.
I think that was the last application. So the public hearings will be adjourned. We'll take a four-minute break and then reconvene in the back. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We have the applicant from number four here. So Mike, if you don't mind?
Yes. I'm going to move it's a type-two action pursuant to seeker.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
With regard to the application itself, I'm going to move that we approve this. It's a minimal addition to what's there and has been there. I think it would add to the property, probably make it safer, easier to get in and out. So for those reasons, I would move.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number five is my application. And for seeker purposes, I'm going to make a motion that we declare this to be an unlisted action and determine that there are no significant impacts on the environment and therefore issue a negative declaration.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on seeker? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On the motion itself, or excuse me, the application itself, I make a motion to grant the request for the variances for the amounts stated at the hearing and during discussion with staff and then also for the buffer.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's go back to number one.
Let's see here. We've got, this is a type-two action. There's no further review under seeker.
Second. Further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
And then I'm going to make a motion to grant this application, the area variances. This is practically identical to what they saw in '92. There's nothing that's changed, except for now we have more accurate measuring done by a surveyor. Looks like the only difference was the surveyor included going out into the street where the previous applicant didn't. Structures haven't changed. The fence lines haven't changed. Everything's going to be exactly the same. So there's no physical changes on site. And it'll make it easier to sell the homes when they're separate parcels. So for that, I will move to approve.
And did we get a second?
Second.
Okay. And the only thing I would note is, is the issue with the map.
Per the site plan.
Submitted map, whatever, it was dated.
Survey map dated, I think it was August 2017.
Okay. Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Two.
Okay. I make a motion that this is a type-two action with no further action required.
I'll second that. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve this variance. This is a four-bedroom house and I can see the need for a two-bay garage. It is, I believe, keeping in character with the neighborhood. There doesn't seem to be any adverse impact in that the rear side, it's not making, pushing it out farther. It's already, it's just coming into line with where the house is. So for those reasons, I would say it's to approve it.
Right.
Second.
Plenty of homes in the neighborhood with two-car garages as well. All right. We have a motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's see. Three.
Number three. We're going to declare it's another type-two action. No further review under seeker.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And this application.
Andres made the motion. Mike seconded it. Type-two.
Type-two. Okay.
And then under this application for the area, or the, what were we, area variance, yeah. We're going to, I'm going to make a motion to approve. This is very similar to the one, I think, that we saw a couple of years ago where we put a porch on the front. A lot of these homes don't have porches on the front. And our climate doesn't really require it. Makes it a lot easier and protects the front entry and the people going in and out. So make a motion.
Looks better, too.
It does.
Motion to approve in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd just also add that the State Preservation Board did review the application and recommended it.
I wrote that down, didn't say it.
It's okay.
Thank you.
Who seconded it? I'm sorry.
Number six.
I'm going to move to adjourn this or to give the table, excuse me. To give the applicant an opportunity to discuss reducing the amount of signage.
Do we do seeker first or do we?
Wait.
Wait. Okay. So motion to table?
Mike knew that.
I did.
Second.
You said for an additional reason on what I answered.
Yeah. And also to determine what the actual measurements of the sign are and what the actual.
Square foot.
Yeah.
Square foot that they are allowed.
Okay. So we have a motion to table for those reasons in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Number seven.
Okay. I move this is an unlisted action, Meg Deck.
I'll second that. Yeah. Further discussion on seeker? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I'm struggling just a little bit with this one.
I don't think anybody else is.
Well, no, 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 no. In that, I would not want three signs, but I'm wondering about two.
Yeah.
That's what I'm struggling with.
Well, and the presenter was clearly substituting.
Right.
But there was, as Mike pointed out, quite correctly so, there was just no.
They didn't make, I don't think they met the burden of their.
Anything other than Verizon always does this and they like it.
Yeah.
No, we usually hear stuff like.
All right.
Trees in the way from this way. And they can always try to come back if they feel they need to, I suppose. So we can entertain that.